Good afternoon, everyone. The February 4th meeting of the Henrico School Board needs to come to order. I want to thank you all for making the effort to come be with us for this extra meeting. Before we tackle the very pressing issues of the day, I want to take a moment to recognize our staff in our classrooms, our schools, the bus drivers, the custodians, everyone who has gotten us to this point and has worked so hard. They have risen to the gargantuan tasks that are before them, that are required to get our virtual learning system up and running and meeting the students' needs, but also, at the same time, planning a path forward, all the while seeing to the health and safety of everyone involved. They continue to be why we are able to serve our students and why we're here. I especially want to take a moment to recognize the efforts of our superintendent. We, who work with her most closely, see the profound care that Dr. Cashwell takes with our students, the staff, and the community. She has been faced with countless decisions this year that have no best answer. Dr. Cashwell strives to stay as transparent as possible with families and the staff during the time when everything is in flux. Each of us has been touched by this pandemic in one way or another. It's something we have to remember, that it is scary. It is frustrating, to be sure, and we all feel it. But during all of this, Dr. Cashwell has handled it all with grace and integrity and seemingly boundless energy. She has been able to focus on the needs of the day as well as working on a plan for the needs of the future. And I want to speak for the entire board when I say that we firmly support Dr. Cashwell and continue to be completely appreciative of her dedication to the school system and the community. So, thank you very much. Okay. Now, we need to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The agenda is approved. Dr. Tygen, I think you are up.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our first and single item for today is, as promised, an update from our Health Committee, specifically to provide the most up-to-date information for this board related to the vaccine effort, as well as the regular Health Committee update that focuses on all of the strategies at hand as we are mitigating and putting in place our health and safety plans. So, Dr. Tygen will serve on point for that. And of course, I would want to acknowledge Robin Gilbert is here with us also, and I know they're both poised to answer any questions you may have as they arise. And again, want to thank each and every member of the Henrico team for their tireless efforts as you've done, Madam Chair, in opening the meeting, and also this entire board. Each and every board member has put in countless hours in service of our families, our students, and your constituents, and I'm grateful for your support. Dr. Tygen?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Robin Gilbert, the Supervisor of School Health Services, and I are here again today to share an update from the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee. Dr. Melissa Veray was going to join us, but she is available by phone should there be any questions of a medical nature. The timeline for expanding in-person learning shared on January 5th was paused after the governor's announcement on January 6th of the imminent availability of the vaccine for school staff. A new timeline for expanding in-person learning was not published at that time, as staff wanted to fully understand the scope and impact of the very important effort to vaccinate staff. Pausing at that time was prudent, given the priority of the effort. The Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee continues to meet to get updates on the vaccine effort and impact to our operations. We met again Monday and are prepared today to provide the board the latest information as you work to reestablish our expanded in-person timeline. Committee members received an update on the vaccination progress and proposed timeline moving forward. As is routine, the committee reviewed the mitigation strategies being implemented in our schools and offices and the level of our personal protective equipment, or PPE, inventory. Lastly, the committee revised the impact of the vaccine effort on reentry and transition plans for student groups returning in person and established considerations for the board. On Tuesday afternoon, the Henrico Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, was able to confirm that they had received sufficient allocation of vaccine to complete administration of the first dose to the HCPS staff who shared a desire to be vaccinated at this time. This means all Henrico County Public Schools staff wanting the vaccine will have received their first dose by tomorrow afternoon, resulting in just under 6,000 staff members who will be anxiously awaiting their second dose. The EOC shared on Tuesday afternoon that they are working to schedule the second dose appointments 28 days from administration of the first dose to our staff, regardless of the manufacturer of the vaccine, whether it's Moderna or Pfizer. The times would fall between 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from February 17th through March 5th. As is evident by the window of time for appointments, our county partners work to establish a schedule that minimizes the impact on our school operations. I know you joined me in thanking them for this consideration. Nurses are not anticipated to be needed during the school day, and instruction should not be impacted with teachers being away in order to be vaccinated. While this arrangement minimizes some impacts on school operations, it does not account for the concern related to staffing and the potential of staff absences and/or inability to work in person due to side effects of the second vaccine dose. The Health Committee urges the board to consider the impact of this factor as it looks to reestablish a timeline for expanding in-person learning. The Health Committee maintains its position that our mitigation strategies are sound and that our schools are prepared for in-person learning. As was shared at the prior school board meeting last week, this also aligns with the latest Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education Guidelines for school reopening. We remain confident in the efficacy of the third core metric, given the following: consistent and correct use of masks. Cloth masks have been provided to all staff, as well as they are available to all students. Disposable masks have been provided to the schools and buses to supplement when students or staff lose or damage one. There is no direct guidance from CDC at this point on double masking. Therefore, the Health Committee recommended not to change our protocols, but certainly support if employees decide to double up. Social distancing, to the extent possible. In all but two schools, there is six-foot social distancing between students, and in these two schools, it is in limited parts of the buildings. Furthermore, the families who selected in-person learning at these two schools are aware and had an opportunity to change from in-person to virtual for their children. And please note that all of our schools have six-foot social distancing between our teachers and our students. Hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Hand sanitizer has been provided in every room in our schools. Bathrooms will be checked multiple times during the day to ensure soap dispensers are filled and paper products are available. Cleaning and disinfection will be done throughout the day and at the end of the day, not only in our schools, but on our buses. Contact tracing continues to be done in collaboration with the local health department. Additional mitigation strategies at this point that are above and beyond those that are included in that third core metric, we meet or exceed all Department of Labor and Industry workplace requirements for PPE and had staff complete the following trainings: promoting behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID-19 and working safely during COVID-19. We continue to maintain a four-month inventory of PPE in our schools, with the exception of gloves, which we have a four-week inventory. We have upgraded air filtration systems in our buildings. Outside consultants have reviewed our systems and made ventilation adjustments in the control systems per the CDC and ASHRA recommendations. The building automation system is monitored daily for issues within the systems, and this is standard operation, not just a COVID adjustment. The HVAC filtering has been upgraded in most schools, and in schools where the systems can't have filter upgrades, air purifiers are provided in the classrooms. This impacts six of our schools, and in some of those schools, it's only a portion of the school. Plexibit class barriers, like those you have in front of you, are in public wherever we have areas where the public interacts most frequently, such as the front office reception area and the school counseling office. Desk guards have been provided for every student and every teacher pre-K through 12. The expectation of student and staff self-assessment procedures to be completed every morning are in place, and we are cohorting our elementary students within the school day. No volunteers. In our health plan, we have said that there would be no volunteers in the buildings. We are, however, exploring protocols that might allow parent volunteers to assist in our schools. We know there are many schools that need additional support, and we appreciate that our families want to assist. We are partnering with the Henrico County Council of PTAs and have a meeting planned to discuss the possibilities with them. An administration of the first dose of the vaccine for those wanting and able to receive it. This is our most recent mitigation strategy, and it is above all the others that were already in place on January 4th, when the Health Committee made the unanimous recommendation to increase the in-person learning. While I have stated this during previous updates, many of these mitigation strategies are above and beyond what other school divisions have offered, who are currently offering in-school learning and have provided for their students and staff. The Health Committee confirmed their continued support for a staggered reentry plan to ensure safety procedures are implemented well on our buses and in our schools. The recommendation is for reentry plans to prioritize early elementary students, then those transitioning from grades, such as those in grade six and nine, followed by the return of the rest of the secondary students. Again, along with consideration for a staggered reentry, the committee members also reaffirmed that there should be consideration on the impact of the second dose of the vaccine and what impact it may have on our staff. The need for substitutes could likely exceed their availability. This should be considered in the plan for expansion of in-person learning. As shared last week, the Health Committee continues to meet weekly and will continue to provide updates to the board, and our safety teams will monitor mitigation efforts in each of our buildings to ensure readiness and that the protocols continue to be followed as additional students return for in-person learning. So you've heard the Health Committee's continued position related to school readiness and the key considerations around reentry plans that account for vaccine logistics. As the board discusses and establishes next steps, Dr. Veray, Ms. Gilbert, and I are prepared to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. Ms. Gilbert, did you have? I saw you proceed. Basically, the way we're going to do this, board members, is we're going to take a few minutes for each of us to ask Dr. Tygen and Ms. Gilbert any questions that you have about the information they just shared. If you have a suggested timeline, we're going to compartmentalize this. We're going to talk about our timeline first, get that information settled, and really focus on our way forward. So I'm going to call on each of you, and then we'll, if you have a suggested timeline, we have people taking notes. And then eventually, what we're going to do is post up on the blue screen something for us to work from, so we stay focused on our work. So, Ms. Shea, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Ms. Augburn. Surprisingly, for those of you who have been following these meetings, I surprisingly don't have any questions for Dr. Tygen today, and that is because she has been answering my questions constantly, almost night and day, over the last week, talking about Health Committee reports and health details and logistics and pitfalls and solutions. And so if I rehashed all of those questions publicly, we would be in this meeting until March. So I'm going to spare you that, but I've taken some notes on some general themes that we have discussed to share with our constituency and with my colleagues as we look for a path forward. I think the most important point is that our schools are safe to return students and staff to the building. We talked about that at the last meeting, and you were very patient with me as I walked through how that has evolved since July. Additionally, we had a unanimous agreement of all members of the Health Committee that it is safe for students and staff to return before the second dose. The CDC and the VDH professionals who analyzed this and used peer-reviewed articles, who are much more knowledgeable than I am as a keyboard warrior reading the Internet, have also determined that it is safe to return before the second dose, and I have to trust that. We've also talked, I've also talked to a lot of our educators in the building, who have shared the steep decline after winter break of their students' engagement and mental health, and that every day matters. Dr. Tygen shared with us last week the disturbing referral versus utilization rates for mental health. Educators have shared with me that they know they can meet more needs in person, and my principals have shared with me that their buildings are ready. To reiterate what Dr. Tygen said earlier, the concerns of the Health Committee for February return were not safety-related. They were related to logistics of the second dose impacting the ability to staff the buildings. The superintendent recommends a staggered return. And then the last piece is, as I reflected on all of this, and really this year, I think if I have learned anything this year, it is that when we are able to move forward, we need to move forward. Back in October, we were saying just a few more weeks to get, you know, to get X. Well, we're finding ourselves three months later still hearing, well, just a few more weeks. And I believe we have to move forward when we can. So here is what I propose to my colleagues for discussion as we work to build consensus. I propose that on February 15th, elementary students return to the building. On February 22nd, 6th and 9th graders return to the building. On March 1st, the rest of secondary returns to the building. Now during those times, we will still be providing the second dose of the vaccination on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Because of that, I suggest that we have students that are returning to in-person learning, we have them in the buildings during those three weeks on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday will be Wellness Wednesday, and Thursday and Friday will be virtual instruction. This accounts for the scheduling of vaccination and builds in accommodations for staff who may have a reaction to the vaccine. This will be more continuity for our students and less burdened on our teachers. It gives time for students and staff to acclimate during the two days per week before being all-in at four days a week after the second dose of vaccination concludes. And then, most importantly, it moves us forward before whatever next speed bump we incur that 2020 and 2021 have shown us will come. It moves us forward before that occurs. I also propose that it is unnecessary for all staff to report to buildings on February 8th. Instead, I propose that staff report to their building one week before their students return.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. I'm taking notes. Okay. All right. That gives us a starting point. Appreciate the depth of your proposal. Ms. Cancela, would you like to go next?
Sure. I actually do have a question. In what schools are we most short-staffed?
There, I don't have the exact list with me right now. We have...
Which level? Like, elementary level, middle, high school?
Elementary, we're still concerned about clinic aides, but we, I know that, and I'll let you speak to that, you have a plan in place.
So yes, good afternoon, everyone. So for the schools that we do not have clinic aides in right now, we do have trained backups within the school. Those backups have not only been trained to cover a clinic so that our nurse who is in the school can move into that health isolation room and take care of any sick children that we have. Should there not be a nurse there, we have sufficient backups trained that the clinic and that health isolation room could be covered. Optimally, we will get those positions filled as hopefully our community hears that we are committed to coming back to school, and we will have more, as we discussed at the last meeting, have more applicants in our pool to fill those positions.
Okay. And how many positions are we short? I think at last meeting, we were still short 32, perhaps?
Is it 26? I was going to say 28. 26 is, I believe, where we are right now.
Short 26.
26, yes, ma'am. We continue to make strides each week, it seems like daily. I'm getting a new note saying we've got them somewhere.
And that's just nurse aides? Is that just our aides or isolation?
That is clinic aides, correct. The school nurses in positions, I have one open school right now that we're recruiting for. It is an elementary school.
Okay.
All other schools have a license assigned to them, one or two licenses assigned to them.
And at last meeting, I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't bring forward once again my concern. I realize the backup in our buildings are administrative teams, correct? Our principals and who else?
In some of our schools, they are the administrative team, yes, ma'am. Depending on the individual school, and the building admin principal has looked within his school to see what resource is best fitted to attain that role. So in some cases, we have people that may have diabetes at the front desk who readily step up and say, this is a role I'd like to take on with these children, and they do that. So I would say that it does vary from school to school.
Okay. I just, once again, want to go on the record saying that's a concern for me, that our administrative teams somehow are a permanent solution, staffing solution, to clinic aide positions. That's, I know it's all hands on deck, but I just want to go on the record saying I'm not a fan of that for my building leaders or for our students.
And let me share that this was a decision made by administrators within their buildings based on their resources, and this is not a position that is a full-time position. This is, if there is an incident within the school, it is like covering, like you think about covering a classroom if someone needs to leave. It's not what is expected to be a daily, all-day responsibility.
Okay.
And please note, Ms. Cancela, I don't see it as the end-all option either. I am committed to this board and to our community to continue to aggressively recruit those positions and get them filled.
I know the team has worked nonstop, wherever you are on the team, you've worked nonstop. I just did want to bring that forward so that families realize that we are still short some positions to make this work. As Mrs. Shea said, I'm not concerned either about the, she spoke to mitigation. I'm not concerned about the mitigation. Goodness knows, we've spent so much money on the CARES Act trying to prepare and make our buildings safe throughout this, and in thinking about how to best expand in-person learning, which I do believe, and I think the whole board has actually supported choice. It's just certain things have delayed our timeline to return to in-person. But I would like to see a slightly different timeline, perhaps, than Mrs. Shea went through that still prioritizes our youngest learners in elementary school and also prioritizes those students for whom virtual learning has been the most challenging. I know throughout this process, I've expressed an interest in perhaps expanding limited in-person until we could truly expand our in-person for those families who choose it. As I look at the vaccination schedule and knowing that shots will go from, what, February 17th to March 5th?
Yes, ma'am.
From 2 to 7. I'm concerned about the elementary start date. To be fair, in partnership, and I include teachers and staff and feedback in my community when I speak about partnership, I would prefer to see the pre-K through 2 shifted, perhaps by a week. It wasn't my understanding that vaccinations would be going during that time period, so perhaps shift pre-K through 2 to the week of the 22nd, and then perhaps 3 to 5 the next week, March 1st. And then because when Dr. Avula was here, he said very clearly, and it's one of the things I've kept with me since July, that secondary students transmit like adults. And for all of the feedback that I've received across, from Henrico County Public Schools, from the community, from in our buildings, that concerns me, so I would like to see a return date for the secondary of about March 15th.
Say it again.
March 15th for the return of secondary. I would think that gives, whether we said fully vaccinated, it was certainly implied to our employees, and because of what Dr. Avula said here in July, that's stuck with me in terms of health and safety for everyone, staff, students, and community. So I would like for board members to please consider that return date for secondary. That's it for right now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Reverend Cooper, and again, what we're going to do is, since we now have two proposals for two different timelines, as soon as all five board members have an opportunity to suggest those dates, we're going to have sort of a working document that we're going to put up so we can tweak and move things around. So Reverend Cooper, do you have comments you would like to share at this time?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, give me one second. I'm just trying to write down Ms. Cancela's piece. Thank you, Dr. Tygen, and for you and your staff, again, and our superintendent, everyone. Quick question, real quick. So out of our staff members that who have been vaccinated, how many teachers and staff have received the vaccination?
It's roughly 6,000 will have received vaccines by the end of today, this afternoon, I mean, tomorrow afternoon, sorry.
So a little over half our staff, so we have, what, 10,000 roughly staff members?
10,000, there's about 10,000. They're not all full-time, and some of them are temporary employees, but yes, it's roughly 10,000.
So if you, I mean, so that being, like, I guess there's a distinction between part-time, full-time, so there's the nuance of that. Could you give a percentage of the staff, then, the eligible staff that has been eligible to receive it that has? If not, I'll just use that 6,000 out of 10, but if there was a more...
If it helps, there's roughly about 75% of our teachers that have chosen.
Okay.
There are a number, when we had, we looked at the numbers of responses that we had by different sites, and if we had low responses, we actually had supervisors make contact to make sure that everyone was aware of the opportunity. Of course, we've not mandated that anyone be vaccinated, but we wanted everyone to know of the possibility. There are employees that we...
There are employees that we have that said that they work a second job and they had already been vaccinated on their second job.
Okay.
And so the numbers are, we don't know how many have gotten a vaccine other places because they may have been in a situation that put them in a, you know, a 1A or higher-up 1B that they received it at work before, you know, our other staff did. But that, you know, we did make due diligence to reach out to staff and make sure they knew that possibility existed.
Okay, yeah, so the 75%, just that percentage is, is directly related to teachers, that number. So I guess we don't have a rough estimate of like other staff.
I mean, in general, it's roughly about 60%, but like I say, there are some of those staff that are considered temporary staff for us, and they may not have worked at all this year to date, or substitute teachers. So when we think about our full-time or part-time staff, you're really looking at about 7,500, I believe. Check with Ms. Bolden and verify. And so when you consider, consider that, it's a, it's a higher percent. I mean, I feel like we've had a higher percentage of our employees have chosen to be vaccinated versus the national average or even in the 1A category.
Well, I just, I just think it's, again, good to share publicly that, number one, we have not mandated staff to get the vaccine, first of all, but then secondly, everyone who has had the opportunity to choose to or not, has, those have chosen to take it, and there's still a high percentage of staff members that have voluntarily decided not to take it in context of our offering. I understand what you're saying, there could have been other means and methods in which they have taken it, but this is just through our offering.
Correct.
Dr. Castro, you or Dr. Tiggen, quickly for me, can you kind of speak to the accommodations we've made for some, for staff as far as our efforts in which, you know, trying to mitigate the apprehension, the fears in the cases that we can in regards to accommodating those situations that, that, that make it more difficult for them to, to, to work in person? Just if you could broach it, I don't want you to give a long dissertation, but just kind of share for me.
Either way, I will attempt to make sure it's a brief explanation, but certainly I think you're asking about accommodations particularly for staff who may have health conditions or other risk factors that would prevent them from being able to work in person. And we have over a series of months really dating back to the, the staff intent we began gathering, actually in the fall, related to finding out what the needs of our staff are, you know, examining not only their own situation, but perhaps if they have a member of their household. We expanded our accommodations in Henrico County Public Schools for our staff to those who may be residing in the same household with someone who has a condition. So as far as numbers and percentages, I know that Mrs. Bolden can likely offer those as well as Dr. Tiggen in generalities, but we did offer and work with staff to find out what their needs are and provide those accommodations for, and we do have quite a number who've received that accommodation.
Well, I appreciate that, because again, I just wanted to be stated that, you know, anything we can do, we have done to try to accommodate our staff, to assure them that, you know, we do care about them and that their safety and their mental, emotional well-being is just as important to us as our students. You know, that's, I appreciate it. Now, I guess for me personally, a couple of things, you know, as before, I weigh in on my timeline. I just want to say that is, it has been and it is my goal, and I feel and know the board's goal to get all of our students back in the building to continue their learning. And I understand the toll this pandemic has had on all our lives, and we are yearning for a sense of normalcy. And from a personal perspective and a full transparency, since I have read many emails, countless social media posts concerning our competency as a board and our concern, I mean, I'm being real about our concern for students and teachers. I just want to clarify publicly that I, and I can't speak for my peers, but I will in this context, want you all to know that we all care about all of our students and each and every one of our staff members, not just teachers, but everyone, whether they are full-time or part-time, working for HCPS, from the superintendent down. From a personal note, I have two sons who attend Henrico County Public Schools, and they too are experiencing some of the same emotional and social concerns as many parents have expressed. I will say that they are doing well virtually, but they also yearn to be back in the building with their peers and their teachers and their staff. As a pastor of a church in the Fairfield District, my leaders and I have made the decision to remain virtual until the community spread decreases in the area and a significant number of my parishioners can get fully vaccinated because of the mitigation strategies that are cumbersome for us as far as the size of our church as well as the cost prohibitive nature of it. Many of my, my church members are employees of HCPS, teachers, teaching assistants, janitors, food service, staff, bus drivers, coaches and counselors, I have them all. And the Fairfield District has, according to the county's assessment, the largest percentage of African-Americans of all magisterial districts in Henrico County. And this is important to know because Black and Brown people have been disproportionately affected by this virus. As a pastor, I prayed for, attended and presided over countless funerals and graveside services of people who have lost their lives to COVID. So my perspective is a little different in regards to persons who question the authenticity and the serious nature of this disease. To be even more personal, my own father, who's 75 years old, was recently hospitalized with COVID. But I'm thankful to God that he was discharged, but he still has to use oxygen because of his breathing and his oxygen intake. So, so I, I've seen the devastating personal impact this virus has had on our families, our communities, our schools, and I understand the mental health implications that are real, that exist. Some students are failing, students are socially isolated, they're depressed. On the contrary, many of our HCPS staff are experiencing the same fears and anxiety as it relates to returning to school. I previously supported our return to school option, the fully virtual option, I continue to support that, return to school and fully virtual option. It is not lost on me that people need to work, that children are having difficulties learning virtually, and some have asked for in-person, and some have asked to remain virtual. That all being said, it's important for me when we talk about this schedule, whatever the schedule we choose, that it will, it will be consistent and that it will ensure that it's not complicated and inconvenient. Because if, you know, when we talk about the schedule, for me, families with food insecurity, housing insecurity, childcare needs, I'm concerned about the planning disruption, any schedule we have might have toward that. So, you know, it's, it's, I say all that to say, you know, we've been out since September. We are in February, and I think the nuances is the plus or minus the weeks, right? So Ms. Shea, she introduced the first group going back on the 15th. Mrs. Consella recommended that they go back on the 22nd. And so for me, Madam Superintendent, if I'm correct, we're saying that the second dosage should be received by the 5th, is that correct? By March 5th, everybody should be? So, you know, it's not a question of going back, but it's just a question of the timing of when to go back. That's, that's for me, and I get, you know, that it's been stated at CDC, VDHA, governor, scientists, you know, about the transmission from students to teachers and all that. I know me personally, I would, you know, I just would feel more comfortable if we measured twice and cut once, just, you know, as we've gotten this close. And I know our, our staff, you know, I know our constituents are just saying we keep pushing this back, we don't, we haven't made a decision. But, you know, anything closer to that, that March the 5th for me as far as, and, you know, I would, I would even suggest staggering the elementary from pre-K to 2nd, then 3 to 5, then the secondary, Madam Chairwoman. I mean, so I, I don't propose moving them all back together, I want to just have a week, whatever that first week is. If we could do pre-K to 2, see how that goes, and then do 3 to 5, see how that goes. And I'm, I'm open to talk about the 6 through 9 and 10 through 12, but, but that, you know, those are the four timeframes as far as kids that I'm looking at.
Do you have a suggested start date different from the two that have been proposed, something in the middle?
Yeah, yeah, well, one thing about Ms. Consella's recommendation is she's, she's asking that the kids go back, right? I would, I would move hers back, she said, I think she said, the 15th, Ms. Consella, you said?
For secondary.
Secondary, right?
For secondary.
I'm sorry, March, yes, March 15th for secondary, yes.
So if you look at the calendar, so, you know, from.
And that, if board members, just in case, if you haven't done, it's probably wise on your computers to pull up a calendar right about now.
Yeah, yeah, no.
If you don't have one in front of you, it's probably a good idea.
Madam Chair, so.
Go right ahead.
So Madam Superintendent has suggested that the vaccine, hopefully and prayerfully, everyone have by the 5th, that's that Friday of the first week of March. So the 8th is that, that next Monday, right? And then you got the 15th, so, you know, just after that second dosage, that, that 5th, you know, I can talk about that. You know, you got the 8th, that's that Monday right after you got the 15th. I know that there, there's some, some dialogue around, you know, post-second dosage as far as, you know, effects and side effects and how persons feel. But, but you know, again, I think that we're clearer than we've ever been, I think we're closer than we've ever been. I think that we're all agreeing that the kids need to go back sooner rather than later. All I'm asking is to have that conversation around the timing, given we've been out since September, we're a couple of weeks away from the second dosage, and just, just talk about, you know, measuring twice, cutting once, you know, phasing in, trying to come up with a schedule that's least disruptive, that, that has continuity for our families who have those insecurities. For me specifically, especially in my district where some of those concerns are magnified because of my social, economic, and even racial makeup. That's, that's my, my statement, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Atkins.
So I appreciate all of the, the recommendations that have come about. I do have questions for Dr. Vare, if we could get her on the line.
Dr. Vare, can you hear me?
Ms. Atkins, can you move your mic a little bit closer? All of us with masks on, it's hard, thank you.
Is that better?
That's much better, thank you.
Ms. Atkins, if you'll ask the question, I'd be glad to repeat it, Dr. Vare is here on the line.
Wonderful. Certainly, the, the second dosage is of concern for me. And so my question is, are COVID vaccine side effects more common after the second dose? And if you could describe some of the reactions that you are seeing?
Dr. Vare, she, Ms. Atkins asks about the second dose of shots and the importance of that second dose. And recognizing that importance, she is asking about the side effects of the second dose, what those would be, when they would occur.
Sure, 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 sure. Can you hear me, or can they hear me, or?
I can.
I'm just gonna repeat my, sorry that I can't.
They can hear you.
I can hear you, Dr. Vare.
I'm sorry, all that, I can't be there in person, I didn't realize this was an in-person meeting, my apologies. To answer Ms. Atkins' question, I absolutely agree that second dose is critical to assure the ultimate, you know, the best effectiveness of this vaccine. After your second, after that second dose, we are seeing increased frequency and sometimes increased severity of some of those side effects that we've talked about. What we think about is usually that day or the next, the day or so after vaccination, and maybe less, about a day or so. What we're seeing is the impact of the immune response. Basically, we are stimulating an immune response as we teach, we teach your body, as a vaccine, not we. The vaccine teaches your body how to fight the, fight the illness. What that means is for that day or so after vaccination, some people, in particular for our folks under 55 who get their second, when they get their second dose, there may be some pain and redness at the area of the vaccination. There may also be some fatigue, some body aches, some people feel like they're a little, they're body aches, fatigue, tiredness, some headache. What you should not get, you should not get trouble breathing, you should not get cough, you should not get loss of taste or smell. However, all this other, the other nonspecific signs, some fever, body aches, fatigue, usually just lasts a day or so, does not last longer than that. And it's just a symptom of your, it's just signs that your body is generating the immune response that's gonna be necessary. But again, should not last more, should, should be very shortly after the vaccination, so in the day or so after vaccination, and it should only last a day or so after. When, speaking with folks at a totally locally, it has, that's what I've heard most often. I know that usually it's the day, not the day of, but in the day after vaccination, and it lasts for about a day. And most people feel if they're gonna, if they're gonna take something, they're gonna take some Tylenol, some ibuprofen, and then they generally feel better on the day after that. I think that we've had some folks who already received their second dose through trials, even in the, within the school nurses, who might be able to comment on that as well, but that's been our experience. Is that, was that to ask your question, Ms. Atkins?
It does, and I just wanted it to come from you, Dr. Vare, because what I have seen from folks that have received sort of that inoculation of the second COVID vaccine is the fatigue, the chills, the body heating up to fight in the form of a fever, and particularly the fatigue that, that you cannot control. And those who have, that have been COVID positive have seen some of the, the same effects when they went back, you know, after quarantine to get the second vaccination. And I've seen it last anywhere from 24 to 48 hours. And that's critical when we're thinking about the number of people. We've had over six, around 6,000 individuals that have received the first shot. And it is interesting, and it's certainly critical in decision-making when we have that number of people getting the second dose at one time in this short period of time. So it becomes very hard, it's a challenge to control sort of the, the environment, if you will, because you could have 50 individuals in one building having that reaction, 100 in another building having a response. And all of this is happening, and this response is happening in a very short period of time. And so I ask my colleagues to keep that in mind because these reactions from the inoculations of the second vaccine are real. And the expectation that a teacher or a cafeteria worker or a bus driver, when they get the second shot prayerfully, they won't have any reactions. But if they do, we may be facing a circumstance that they're not able to work or perform their duties. And that's so important to ensuring that students are getting the instruction that they need. So thank you, Dr. Vare, for, for sharing that. I also think that when we think about getting vaccines in general, side effects is sometimes what makes folks hesitant about getting the first dose or the second dose of the vaccine, particularly for Black and Latino individuals. And it dates back in history, whether you're thinking about the Tuskegee experiment, whether you're thinking about unequal access to treatment in healthcare, and in general misinformation. So when you have such layering negative impacts in your history, and then there's that same uneasiness and unequal treatment today in healthcare, it really is a conversation to have when we're thinking about, you know, staff and our communities in general. So I think that one thing that is important, and I'll just reiterate, and I know Dr. Vare and her team is doing the best they can with this, is just making sure that we pre-arm our staff with accurate information about potential response to these, these vaccines so that they can plan. The worst thing in the world is to go and be scheduled to get your shot, not be aware of some of the reactions to the shot, get home and not have the Tylenol or the Motrin or the things that you may need. But if folks, if we do a good job of sharing that upfront, they will, can plan and be better prepared, particularly with, with teaching and their students and thinking about their students and planning. So I just wanted to share that. I do, if I could ask Ms. Bolden a few HR questions, I'd love to have the opportunity to do that as well.
Ms. Atkins, before we go with Ms. Bolden, there were a couple, I, I think our board members on this side could not hear the response of Dr. Vare as well. So if you could just summarize for me, Robyn, if you don't mind.
Yes, absolutely. So with our second shot, we have seen an incidence of side effects. Usually within 24 to 48 hours, resolution occurs. Those side effects would include anything up to a multitude, but, or individually, a low-grade fever, redness or soreness at the site of the injection, fatigue or malaise, a headache. Those are usually the symptoms we see. Things we would not expect to see would be shortness of breath, the loss of smell or taste, and we have not been seeing GI symptoms typically with that second shot as, as a side effect.
And just to clarify, that generally been lasting about 24 to 48? And just to clarify, that generally been lasting about 24 to 48 hours.
24 to 48 hours to resolve. And we have been recommending Tylenol or Advil to ward off any of those symptoms. So we would recommend that you go home and take that. Very similar to what we do with our children on their childhood immunizations when they go in for those first immunizations at two, four, and six months. The doctors tell you, you know, give them some Tylenol when you get home, some warm compresses. Those things are all things that we would recommend to employees after a second shot.
But just to be clear, too, for our information, if they receive, we're only doing Wednesdays, Thursdays, Wednesdays through Sat- Saturday?
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So most people would find any side effects would be resolved by Sunday?
By Sunday, so that we could have a return in class on Monday, yes, ma'am.
Now we'll go back to Ms. Atkins. Does that answer everybody's questions about side effects? Okay, everybody's got what they need, thank you. And now we'll, Ms. Atkins, and we'll go back to you with your questions for Ms. Bolden.
Thank you. So Ms. Bolden, I appreciate you being available today and sharing your expertise. I have questions around accommodations. And I don't know if you have an answer for these. And if you do not, that's fine, that's completely fine. I'm really concerned about the number of students returning to the building and then teachers not returning to the building. Have you received any feedback from vaccinated teachers that had accommodations, but now that they have the vaccine and getting also prepared to get the second vaccine, are you seeing folks sort of rescind or reverse their decision in their accommodations?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have an exact number with regard to how many, but we have had individuals, teachers.
Ms. Bolden, can you move closer to the mic?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Thank you. We have had teachers asked to rescind accommodations as a result of receiving the vaccine. I don't have exact numbers, however.
Well, that's what I suspected, and that would be my prayer because, you know, it's already a challenge to have, you know, those who selected for their children to be in person. The expectation is to have an individual there to teach them and receive quality instruction. But it is a stressor for staff to have to figure it out when we don't have folks in the building. And it is important to have that number. Of course, we, I don't need it today. But I would like to know what that number is to better understand those impacts and those challenges that our principals will be trying to figure out.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that. That's all I had, thank you.
And I might add to Mrs. Bolden's response, and I also thank her for her work and the entire HR team throughout a number of months in working with our staff and our principals on understanding staffing needs. And so when we had staff give intent and work with them to get accommodations, our principals have worked over the past months as we had been prepared to return in person at prior dates, as you know, to come up with the staffing ratios. So they're prepared to do that. And then certainly, if a staff member later rescinds an accommodation or many of them have accommodations that were due to expire anyway in the coming weeks or months, our principals are aware of that and are able to staff accordingly. But we are staffed currently with the right instructional formats, though it varies from school to school, to serve those who have selected in person.
Thank you for that. It's pretty ironic, kind of a quote is sitting in my head that kind of expresses how I feel. So I think I'll start with that. This quote is actually from Bruce Lee, if you can believe that or not. But he said, "We can see more through our tears than the lenses of a telescope." And I have seen tears from seniors that don't really feel like seniors. I've seen tears from parents that just don't know how to keep going. I've seen tears from parents that are excited because that student that was in the classroom, they couldn't get still. And that parent got the phone call every week saying, "Hey, is there something that we can do together to keep your child sitting in the chair?" And those parents are excited because those children are doing well. And so whether they were, their tears of joy or tears of pain or tears just from stress, I've seen a lot, I've seen them. And, you know, I've seen also tears from a school board member that was exhausted because she thought she did everything she could. So, you know, recommended from CDC, washing hands and all, and still was exposed and was COVID positive. And that person is me. And so it certainly is eye-opening to go through some of the symptoms that you have been COVID positive. It's certainly something to hear stories. But gosh, to see tears when folks are angry or sad or happy or filled with joy, it certainly helps me understand a multitude of stories. However, I do want to be clear, I did not get the virus from being exposed to a teacher or exposed to a student in a school building. Our mitigation strategies work. Unfortunately, the community spread does impact our operations. And I think that it's important to be clear about that, that we do understand that what happens in our community sometimes is indicative of what may happen in our buildings. But that doesn't mean that that transmission, again, is happening between teachers and students. It's in our communities and sometimes it's brought into our buildings, quite simply said. I also know that this second shot, a word that has been used quite often is clunky. I can't figure out a better word to use, and those who know me know I like words. But this second shot, what's important for me is whether it's from Henrico County that the individual gets that second shot or from CVS, it will impact operations and staffing. And I think it's important that as we have this discussion, we know the numbers of our staff that's getting the second shot. But there are people that will be getting the second shot from other areas, and that does impact our operations all day. Particularly Black and Latino, it's going to be an issue. And so for me, in being here, the goal is to provide the opportunity of quality instruction to all students. And as I think about all that I've read and emails, social media, and everywhere else, the truth is, we had students struggling before this pandemic, and they were in our buildings. So I'm going to pause and let that sit right there. We had challenges while students were in our buildings. And putting our students in the buildings doesn't resolve some of those challenges. I do think that it's important to recognize that parents have chosen the best environment that's conducive to learning. But the building itself is not conducive to learning. It takes a partnership to create a conducive learning environment. It takes the students, the teachers, the parents, the neighbors who don't have children in the building. It really does take more than just the bricks to create a conducive learning environment. And so for me, some of the things I'm hoping in our discussion that will be answered is what are we doing to honor our parents that have already said, "I've shared with Henrico County the environment that's conducive to learning that I want for my child." They've shared that with us, and what are we doing to honor that? The second question I hope that we have discussion on is what preventable measures are available to protect the health and mental well-being of staff and students? That's always on my radar. And then the third question that I hope we answer in our discussions today is, with whatever decision we make today, how does that impact the academic success for students? Because the goal is academic success for students, we're allowing our parents to help us understand the best environment conducive to learning, whether it's at a screen or in a building. We're allowing our parents to help us with that. So with all that said in our discussions, those are the things that I'm hoping to have a very solid answer on for my decision-making. I agree with Roscoe and Christie that I would prefer for that date to be closer to March 5th for all the reasons that I've stated. And also for a person that's been COVID positive and for a person that have already received a shot. So I'm not just sharing this from anybody else's lens, even though I have a few lenses that I've seen that I've already shared. I'm also sharing this from my own experience. So Chairman Ogbon, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Cincella, you have a question you wanted to ask before?
I do, it's for Ms. Bolden. I apologize, I meant to catch you before you sat down. It's in follow-up to what Ms. Atkins was saying. She brought up a very good point about the accommodations that we've given staff. And if, also, I think Reverend Cooper mentioned it as well, that we have been more accommodating to our employees beyond just the employee themselves accommodating within the household. So I once again wanted to say that, that we've done more than others have done to value their employees and their families. But my specific question is in response to some advocacy I've heard in the past two weeks about now that employees, perhaps with accommodations, have received the vaccine, there is no pressure on them, perhaps from anyone, to suddenly get rid of their accommodation and return to in-person if they were approved for virtual? Am I correct?
You are correct, Ms. Cincella. Just because a person has received the second, first, second vaccine, that does not nullify the accommodation previously approved.
Okay. I just wanted that to go on the record for some of our employees that may be listening, that reached out, that are very concerned about getting pressure to come back in-person when they have a medical accommodation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all I had, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And board members, in listening to the four of you, one of the things that resonates with me is that we are all intent on putting children first and making sure that their health and safety, but also, most importantly, their education is attended to. And I think it's a child-centered approach, that's the most important thing to me. I know we've got three teachers sitting up here who think like teachers. And, but I also just heard Ms. Cincella say it's more value, more accommodations to our employees. Dr. Tiggin said more mitigation. I hear more and more and more. And that our, our Health Committee has told us clearly that our buildings are safe to go into now. And so I'm of, I'm in the camp of as soon as possible. Whatever that date is, I am hearing from constituents whose children are, have adapted very well to virtual learning. And it works for some families in their circumstance. And I think it works in, for some children. But also, there are some children who benefit and who need that personal in-person approach of being able to deal with an adult. But, you know, it is very hard for that child who's on the brink or whatever. You need to be able to see their eyes. If those children need that in-person approach, I hear that. I mean, I really do. And to Ms. Atkins' point of your perspective changes when you get that positive test. And absolutely, and so we share that. And I, but I'm trying not to make this personal. But I do have to look at it from a lens of families who have been affected. And there's probably not a family on this planet who hasn't been affected by this thing. And I think, I'll be honest with you, some of the emails that we get and some of the phone calls, I think people forget that the six of us up here have been affected just like every person in this community. And so we do understand what families are going through because our families are going through it too, our teachers, our employees. So I feel for those families especially whose children have not adapted to virtual learning well, whether it's the structure of the family, whether it's the working demands of parents who are not at home during the day. And there, we do have children who are struggling. And those are the ones who are really in need of in-person instruction. So as far as, you know, we have, we have options, I think the next thing to do is we need to, let's, Dr. Tiggin, if we could get it up on the screens, what our options are at this point. And then we need to work through the list and come up with something we can all support. Because we do have quite a variety. We have roughly a month that we're working with here. And so we'll hopefully be able to get that up there. Hold on just one second. And then we'll work through it.
Madam Chair, before we work through it.
Absolutely, Reverend Cooper.
You did ask us to kind of give like our timeframe. Do you have one that you want to suggest before?
Actually, I do. I actually support...
I'd love for that to be included, I'm just...
No, I actually support students coming back on the 15th. I understand, and I really, I have learned more today, but the vaccination and the side effects do concern me. I know several people who have, that I've talked to, family members included, who have gotten the vaccine and have had no symptoms and side effects whatsoever. But on the other hand, I talked to a friend of mine who's a nurse who got hers, and she felt like she had COVID for two days after getting it. So the side effects do vary. So I am, I like the idea of on those second-dose days that our students are virtual, to allow our staff to get it and possibly get over those side effects. So I think that's a great approach. And to me, you know, this is not a one or the other. This, I think what we're headed towards is a middle-ground approach where we get some, our kids in as quickly as we can, but we're also going to allow our staff the time to get that second dose safely. And, and so, I mean, I think we're headed there. But I personally, if it were up to me, I would start the kids on the 15th of February with elementary and let's ease in with our elementary students. I would like to see our high school students in, within a week or two after that. I'm hoping for a February instead of March for our high school students just because we have so many who are, especially for our seniors, who need that in-person approach. But...
They're working on it.
Oh, we're working on it, that's fine. But that's my take on it. I, my constituents have been, obviously, we get emails on both sides, but my constituents by far and large are asking for the ability for students to go back as quickly as possible. And I think because we have those mitigation factors in place, if we didn't, we would be having a different discussion, but we do. And I think, so, but I do also agree, we need to do this slowly. Our students need the opportunity to get accustomed to being back in the building. But I think elementary first, get our little ones in first, and then follow with secondary.
And that's where I agree. I agree with the staggered approach. I am in there with you with the staggered approach because we have the opportunity with the staggered approach to learn. We're going to be learning some things.
Right.
And so, just so that everyone is clear, the staggered approach is a winner for me. I think that we certainly are need, going to need to have some discussions around the start times.
Right.
So I'm excited to have that conversation.
Okay. Any other comments while we're waiting for the?
They were just adding your comments, Ms. Ogbon, as you were talking.
So, little delay here. All right, so what we'll do is we'll take a five-minute comment. Oh, absolutely. And then we'll take a five-minute recess to get everything up there. Ms. Cincella?
I just want to ask my colleagues to consider, I know, I believe Mrs. Shea brought it forward. And I think we'd probably all agree in terms of whenever our students are returning to in-person in the building, when we think about staff and when they actually come back in the building, I believe Mrs. Shea recommended the week before. I would like for us to... I would like for us to really think about that, because I agree with it. Because the February 8th date mentioned at our last meeting, I think it's safe to say that, is that off the table, Dr. Cashwell?
Yeah, as I hope I've clarified, and it doesn't hurt to clarify again, I think what we heard around February 8th was simply discussion from the Health Committee that as soon as February 8th, particularly after that first vaccine date, we want to continue to encourage staff who have not been in our buildings and who will be teaching in-person as such time as we do resume, to have an opportunity to begin to practice and understand our mitigation strategies. And so what's been proposed here is certainly not contrary to what's previously been shared.
Okay, I just wanted to ask my colleagues to please consider, you know, the week before, as Mrs. Shea said. And then just to note, having heard from different administration folks, that when the date is set, it's set. This timeline and then employee return to in-person in the building, of course, not those folks, of course, that have the medical accommodation to teach virtually. Right? The date is the date, and principals would like for that to be required, if you will. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're going to take a quick five-minute break while our staff gets our document up, and then we... Okay, we will reconvene. And if you will look up on the screen, Board members, you will see basically a summary of what we talked about, our different timeline options. And before we begin, Mrs. Atkins has a follow-up question for Dr. Tiggen, am I correct? Ms. Atkins?
So thank you both for coming back. I have just one follow-up question that I think is important as we move into discussion around timeline. And I'd like for you to speak to the protocols if someone is sick. So if you could speak to whenever an adult comes into the building that is sick, what happens next? What is the 72-hour protocol? What is the recommendation by the CDC? So whether they are sick from getting the second shot, or whether they are sick from something else that may have occurred? And can you speak to that as an adult and then speak to that as a student coming in the building?
First of all, I'd just like to clarify that we hope if someone's sick, they won't be coming into our buildings. That we have an employee health screener and a student health screener that we expect to be done every day, that provides about 10 or 11 questions, which are the standard ones that most of you have if you've been to a doctor or anywhere else, dentist, that they ask you when you go in, as well as being fever-free. And so we have really worked to educate our staff on if you have a fever or any of these symptoms, you should not be coming to work. And you should be, you know, calling in sick like you would hopefully any other day, but this time you don't push through and come to work. But I'll let Ms. Gilbert talk about if you end up being at school sick or if you're out sick, what happens?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Atkins, this answer is going to apply both to our students and our employees. And we have had a slight change based on community transmission with COVID. So the CDC recommendation depends on what the community transmission looks like. When the transmission is lower, we have a quicker turnaround for those who have been ill back into our population. However, with community transmission where it is now, someone who is ill experiencing any of the COVID-like symptoms would be required to remain out of school or out of the workplace for 10 days. The exception to this would be if those symptoms are related to a chronic condition. Now, we may know this for our students because we will have a health history, and that may have already been communicated by the parent or guardian. And we can relate to that particular condition, and the child would be treated and returned to the classroom for instruction as we would in any year. However, if we do not have a chronic condition to relate this to, then we will work with the parent and a physician to see if there is a reason that the child is having these symptoms. If it is an illness, they will be required to stay out of the building. Again, the employee would be required to stay out of the building for 10 days. For a physician to release them back into the building earlier, they would be providing us a note, not necessarily for employees, what type of condition they have, because we're not requiring that information be released to us, but simply that the employee is not communicable. Thereby, they would not be spreading those symptoms to another individual employee or student.
That answered my questions. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And I have one while you're up here.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could just, it's not something we've really talked about, but efficacy of the vaccine itself.
Yes, ma'am.
So my understanding is that it takes roughly two to three weeks for the first vaccine to give you full coverage, which would be about what percentage?
About 50%. When you reach that four-week during that, from injection time to the four-week point, you're going to reach about 50% efficacy. That would be the timeframe around which you would be receiving your second vaccine. And from the second vaccine, an additional two weeks out brings you to that 95-98% efficacy.
Okay. And can you compare that, if you know? Because I didn't tell you I was going to say this, but because I think I know, to the flu shot?
The flu shot is a much more variable...
Year to year.
Year to year. So when we do a flu vaccine, we look at the flu variants in the community this year. So next year's vaccination will actually cover this year's variants. So anything that's new next year would not be covered. So we have a higher possibility of contracting those variants during that year. What I can more compare it to would be the childhood immunizations. And so for our childhood immunizations that are state law required with a few exemptions, we receive about an 80% to 85% efficacy with those when we complete a series. So let's take hepatitis B, which is the first injection you get coming out of the hospital. When you complete that series, we expect that between 80% and 85% of infants would have developed the antibodies to ward off hepatitis B. We don't know that unless we draw those antibodies, which we typically don't do. But that, so 80% to 85% as compared to 95% to 98%, which is pretty impressive.
Well, and it's my understanding that that's the key, is you've developed the antibodies, you're able to, if you do get it, you might have lessened symptoms, but you're also, your body might just, you might just not get it at all. But we need this community-wide in order to stem this tide.
Yes, ma'am. That is what they were referring to, is the herd immunity. And we'd like to get 70% or better of our community vaccinated so that we can get that immunity up and achieve where we're not capable of spreading that disease.
But it would, the things that I have read was that for a vaccine like this one, for a virus, to get 98% efficacy is extraordinary.
It is.
It's like you said to the others, that some of the childhood illnesses are 70% and 80%. So to get one to 98% is, it's groundbreaking. 10 years from now, we're all going to be going, wow.
The whole thing has been groundbreaking, but yes, ma'am.
The science from this is going to be a game changer.
Absolutely.
But, you know, the thing is, is that some of the vaccines that are around the corner, some of them are saying 65%, 75% one-shot, all the different things that are coming. But we're at the cusp, we're at the beginning of it, we're learning as we go. As I have said so many times, there is not a manual for how to handle a pandemic on a bookshelf that we can rely on. So we're doing the best that we can to make the decisions that we can. But 50% immunity in that world is good, correct?
It is certainly good, and it's a beginning, one that we need to encourage all of our community and join hands to fight this as a village.
So, I mean, so from my perspective, when I'm thinking our teachers will have enough time, if we were to start on the 15th of February, they will have had that time for the full implementation of their vaccine to bloom, so to speak, and their immunity would be roughly 50%.
Two-thirds of them would be.
Excuse me?
Two-thirds of them would be. We went through three weeks, so three processes. And at the 15th, that first week would be coming back in for their shot. So I'm thinking two-thirds would be at that three or four-week, depending on the vaccine they got, Moderna or Pfizer.
The timing of it is crucial there.
Would be there, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
I'd also like to just kind of follow up to Ms. Atkins' question is, you know, when our teachers, if they're sick and are not able to come in, you know, we have substitutes, we do have our regular substitute list. Our substitutes were offered the vaccine with our staff, the ones that have been working for us. And so that, you know, we do have substitutes in addition through our CARES Act money. We've provided classroom monitors, we provide perm subs, permanent substitutes. And so the staffing in buildings is much greater this year. So when we do talk about if there's areas where there are vacancies, those are extras that have been added on that weren't there in previous years. But we do have additional staff in all of our buildings. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as we, you know, think about what happens if a teacher is sick. We do have substitutes, and we do have classroom monitors and permanent subs that can come in. We have people that can cover the clinics, we have people who can, you know, we're confident in the plan that, you know, as we do every year, if we have a vacancy, we cover it. And we have people who, in a building, in central office, that can help.
Okay, great. Ms. Kinsella, you had another point.
I just wanted to point a clarity, or maybe just a point of advocacy, that in the event when we do return, well, when we return to in-person, let me just say that, when we return to in-person, so that everyone hears that. And if we are actually short-staffed. For example, if we don't have the monitors that we've hired, and if we don't have the substitutes available perhaps in certain buildings on a given day, who covers the classes? Are these not our teachers covering classes, therefore losing planning time? Because I just want to really understand what kind of additional asks we're going to be putting on our staff when they're already teaching virtually and in-person? And then they're going to lose their planning time perhaps to cover classes for folks? If you could clarify that, please?
There, you know, I know that central office staff stands ready to help support in schools. You know, whether there's, we know that coverage happens in other years. A teacher may need to cover occasionally. But with the added staff, we were really working to make sure schools had the personnel they needed to meet the needs within their schools.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, so if we'll, I'll direct, no, I don't have a question, but... All right, so let's direct ourselves to the screens and we do the work. So at this point, we have two options. Do you want to start with start date?
Yeah.
We have start date of February 20th, February 15th, I said that. And so did Mrs. Shea, and Mrs. Kinsella is February 22nd. So let's dive in, Ms. Shea?
If I may, Madam Chair, I have, obviously, we're going to have to find compromise, and we're going to have to find consensus kind of as we piece this timeline together. So let me attempt to do that, pulling in some pieces from everybody's plan. And then, you know, others are obviously welcome to suggest their compromise as well. I heard from Ms. Kinsella that she's concerned with the return of the majority of secondary and would like that past, at least past March 5th. I heard from Mr., from Roscoe Cooper that he would like pre-K 2, broken apart from 3 through 5. I heard from Ms. Atkins, concern about the side effects of the second dose and giving our teachers some space to deal with those, as well as the importance of a staggered return. And then Ms. Ogbon and I with the February 15th return. So let's try this. February 15th, pre-K through 2 returns. February, oh gosh, I lost all my notes now. February 22nd, 3 through 5 return. March 1st, 6th grade and 9th grade return. And March 8th, the remainder of secondary returns. During the three weeks that vaccinations are given, we are Monday, Tuesday in the building, Thursday, Friday, virtual. That allows space for any of our teachers who have side effects. It also provides some relief in terms of class coverage for our teachers who are in the building, for other colleagues that may have to stay out due to side effects. It gets us staggered, it breaks up our elementary, and it gets the bulk of secondary closer to the March 15th target that Ms. Kinsella proposed.
I'm sorry, where was the compromise in that? Seriously?
It splits out 6 and 9, it adds another weekend.
Starting on March 1st.
Right.
We don't have efficacy on our employees at the secondary. And let me just emphasize, I know our mitigation is strong, but secondary students transmit like adults. I have tried to compromise on this, but I have been health and safety, health and safety for everyone. I have to stand firm and just encourage my colleagues on this one to reconsider the return of secondary.
15, 22nd, review the dates again, Ms. Shea?
15, 22nd, first, 8th.
Can we have someone update the slides with what you're proposing? I think that it's best, as we have this discussion, that we're all looking at it and being able to speak to it at the same time.
And I think honestly, it would help us if we only had the dates and take out all the verbiage. And, because I think we've, we all know that if you don't mind updating it with just dates. Just dates. And Board members, if you're not looking at a calendar on your computer, it's probably handy if you did.
Ms. Kinsella, so Dr. Cashwell stated by the 5th of March, all inoculations should have taken place and transpired. Now, I know initially you said secondary March the 15th.
I did.
How do you feel about secondary March the 8th? That Monday after the 5th, after all the inoculations have occurred as far as the 2nd? And then we could talk about, you know, February as far as elementary, but I mean...
Well, it was going to take two weeks, I thought. Is it 10 days? I think it's two weeks for the efficacy.
It is.
And, you know, as we just are so amazed at, Ms. Ogbon, what you were talking about, about 95% to 98% efficacy on this one, I just, I feel strongly that secondary, I mean, that March 8th is too soon.
Well, and I would echo what I, the reason, one of the reasons why I said what I did is I liken it to the flu shot as far as efficacy. As far as vaccines, the reading that I've done is that if you have a vaccine that is 50% effective, that's extraordinary. To have one that's 90% is really extraordinary. And so for us, the flu shot generally in years is 30% to 40% and everybody goes about their business. People die from the flu shot every year. Believe me, having had COVID, it is much worse than the flu. But I am not comparing it that way at all, I don't think they are the same. But I think we can look to how people react to the shingles vaccines, vaccines to other vaccines that they take. There are side effects, but we will have given our employees time for 50% coverage, which I think for comparing to other vaccines is great coverage. And our kids are struggling. So I am, I am for getting our elementary kids back into, especially the elementaries, in, on the 15th. I, I mean, it is only two days because we are having vaccinations that week and the next week. So I understand that.
Can I add a point of clarity too?
Absolutely.
The 15th is actually also an early dismissal day.
It is.
So the 15th would be an early dismissal, they'll have the rest of the week off if it did, we did agree on the 15th.
Right, it's a half-day on the 15th, they would go the half...
I'm talking the 2nd, I apologize. Please, yeah.
Right, the 15th is only a half-day as it is, and then the 16th is a full day, and then the rest of the week is virtual. At least lets our pre-K to two kids. I mean, personally, I would go pre-K through, I'd go all elementary on the 15th. But I don't think I can sell that. But if it were up to me, we would start all of elementary, and it's a day and a half. And then the next week, they'd all go, it gives them a chance to re-acclimate to the building. I mean, I've heard from... I mean, I've, I've heard from parents whose kindergartners have not been in school all year. She, and, and one, you know, particularly poignant was she took her kindergartner in to school for the first time for some assistance and just odd, you know, that the child was in school. So I know we're going to have some adjustment. And having been in kindergarten classrooms and been in, in, in a preschool teacher, I, I know that because those kids that do go back have not been in school all year, the half day on the 15th and the day on the 16th is going to be adjustment. It is going to be, how do we get in line? It is going to teach, it is going to be focused with this, with the little ones on process and how do we acclimate to being back in school? So for, to me, that 15th and 16th, a day and a half of letting our kids acclimate, and then on the 22nd, they start back again. They go only two days that week. Honestly, in my district, that's not going to go over well. I know the emails I'm going to get on just having those four days. In my district, they want all five, they want five days. I mean, there are a lot of people, and everybody starts the 15th. But I mean, I have a large contingent of people who want to do away with Wellness Wednesdays. I have a large contingent of people who want five days on the 15th. Let's go. And so I, I would, I would think that we're only talking about a day and a half for pre-K through 2 on the 15th.
Are you saying March the 1st, they would begin five days?
I, I haven't said that. That March the 1st.
I'm just saying because you do...
We need to talk about Wellness Wednesday. We're going to talk about that after we do a timeline. But I, I would advocate for the 15th for pre-K and 2 for that day and a half that week because it is a half day on that Monday. And then the next week, I can go along with the next week being pre-K through 5. Everybody is in for, for those two days because we have inoculations on Friday. And then my preference would be to start all secondary on the 1st.
If I may for a second, respond to Ms. Consella. You know, respectfully, when I look, I, I don't see this as a safety issue. I don't see follow, you know, we are following the Health Committee's unanimous recommendation that it is safe for, for elementary and secondary and staff to be back in the building before the second vaccine. All along, we have followed the recommendations of the VDH and the CDC. And, and as we all know, during the beginning of January, the data showed a shift that the most important factor was the mitigation. And so if we were still talking about community spread, if the data was showing that that was still the most important piece, then, you know, then I'd be absolutely there with you. Let's get everybody fully vaccinated. But the experts are saying, who are, again, way more knowledgeable than I am, they are saying that, you know, the, the governor, the CDC, they are saying that even without the second dose of the vaccine, it is safe for students of all ages to be in the building with their teachers. And I have to trust that. I have to trust people who are way smarter than I am in this. And so by putting our secondary students back in the building before the date of the 15th, I'm not, I, I'm not suggesting we do it at the expense of the safety of our staff. The Health Committee has said it is safe, period. The question mark was around the logistics. And by doing the Monday, Tuesday, and virtual on Thursday, Friday, it takes care of those logistic pieces.
Well, and two, I would add that, and then I'll go to whomever, is that, you know, we have, like Ms. Shea said, we have listened to the Health Committee. They are the knowledgeable. We have tried to listen to the science. We're listening to the, the experts. And I don't think you can pick and choose. When do I listen to the scientists? When do I not? When do I believe in science? When do I not? The science is clear. They're telling us school is safe to go into without vaccines. Now that we have them, it's still safe to go back in schools. And we do have vaccines. They're going to give our teachers 50% protection. And which, by all accounts, is pretty good for a vaccine. So I'm, I'm just, I can't agree to delaying anymore. I feel like we, we were virtual all spring. It's been almost a year that our students that have been out of, out of school. And we are, we have a contingent of students who will not return this year. They have opted, and that is their right and their choice. But I think it is time that we have parents who have expressed, we are ready to go back into the building. We have been ready to go back in the building. And your Health Committee and the science says it's safe. So I can't really find a reason to buck the science. It, it is, I can't be compelled to go against what our Health Committee is telling us, what the doctors are telling us. We've done it before, and we face the ire of our constituents. And to do it in this case, when we're told the mitigation is safe, the vaccine is administered, I, I don't know what we're waiting for.
If, if I may, Ms. Ogborne, Ms. Shea?
Can I, I just want to interject. I think that, that our conversation and this discussion would be more fruitful if we called on each member so that we can rotate.
Okay.
What I would, what I want to make sure is, is that, that we're selfless a little bit because it can be hard, and I'll speak for myself, when the discussion is between two members back and forth, back and forth.
All right. I understand.
So Mrs. Consella was about to speak, but Chair, if you could call on us, I think that'd be more fruitful.
Absolutely. Be glad to. Ms. Consella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for that.
Okay.
You know, with the numbers still as high as they are, and I guess I'm just vexed because now mitigation is stronger. We don't need the vaccine to go back in buildings, but yet let's get vaccinated within the first 100 days of our new presidency. It's just mixed messages. And over here in the Brooklyn District, where I'm still looking at data, and I'm thinking about partnerships in the Brooklyn District. I'm thinking about my students, my families, my guardians, my teachers, my staff, my administrators, my colleagues on this board, and our entire Henrico community. I mean, I, from the Brooklyn, I can't, I would like for the numbers to decrease more past the 15th. I mean, perhaps the, you know, the 22nd of February. I just think it's, we've come so far. We're, we're crossing the finish line. I just think now is the time. I mean, we can build trust, build some bridges, and be successful and still have led the way, honestly, in Henrico County with the way we've handled the pandemic.
So do you have an alternate timeline? You're, you're, on the 22nd, you would start?
Yeah, it just reverts back to what I said before.
Pre-K through 2 still. Okay.
Which was February 22nd as a pre-K 2. Because it lets us know how, you know, potentially the, the first doses went of the vaccine.
I'm sorry. Ms. Shea, do you have anything else you want to add to that conversation?
Well, Madam Chair, can, can Ms. Consella just give all of hers?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
And then I think that's what Ms. Atkins was saying, that we could share what we, our timelines are. We can kind of find a medium ground.
Okay. All right. Ms. Consella, did you have anything else to add?
I, I could go with, I would prefer March 1st, actually, for pre-K to 2 just because it gets us farther down the road. But I could see compromise on February 22nd. And then if there was a sense of compromise, I could see pre-K 2 on the week of the 22nd. The following week at 3 to 5, March 1st through 5. March 8th, I don't, I don't know. I really like March 15th for the secondary. Just because the students...
So to be clear, March 15th would be all secondary?
Well, or maybe we do.
Eight, 6 through 12.
6 through 9th, I think originally, we did a Monday, Tuesday. Dr. Cashwell, if you would refresh.
I, I would just refresh the recommendation that we, we stand by, which is that we'd like to offer our 6th and 9th graders, who are for the first times entering their middle or high school, an opportunity to do that in advance of the entire secondary student body. And so that was the reason we had requested a staggered start.
Okay. So would that be, would you look at 6 and 9? Dr. Cashwell, is the whole week of just 6 and 9th or just...
I mean, that's certainly, you know, open to the board's preference there. But, you know, a day advance would be opportune, at least a day advance for them to have that experience and acclimate to the building and some of those procedures that they'd yet to have in person in their...
Then perhaps the week of March 8th, 6 and 9? And then the balance of secondary on March 15th?
Okay. So 10 through 12. Okay. Can we have that new timeline put up? Which is the 22nd, first, 8th, 15th? As a, as, leave that one up there and then this is an alternate? That's, that's what I was hoping. Okay. Ms. Shea, when you want to comment. Uh, Ms. Consella, are you finished? Did you have any other?
I'm finished. I'm finished going through until we continue the compromise. Right. I'm finished for the, for the moment.
All right. I'm sorry. Further comments before...
I do have some comments, but I want to let the other side of the dais make sure they get a, a chance before.
Reverend Cooper?
I think those are two viable options right now. I mean, I think I can work within the parameters of these two. I think Marcy, Ms. Shea said, pre-K 2, 5, 215, right? 222, 35, 3169, 3812, 1012, correct? So I mean, I, I think that these two provide a great framework. And now we can see what Ms. Atkins wants to say, and then we can work from there. So I don't want to convolute this anymore.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
I would agree. Let's get both of these timelines up and have a discussion between the two of them.
Okay. Sure. Ms. Shea?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment just on, on two brief pieces. You know, I have, in Henrico, we have followed what the health experts in the VDH have told us. At no point this year that I can remember have we ever reversed engineered metrics in order to get the outcome that we wanted. We followed what the health said, and that really frustrated people at times. And sometimes it made us look like we were flip-flopping because the recommendations changed. But likes, unlike some other districts in our area, we have never reverse engineered metrics. We have trusted our health experts. And I think we have to continue, we have to continue to do that. And I like the sense of compromise that we're coming out, and I, I look forward to discussing these two timelines. I just caution us to use the mindset of waiting for the numbers to fall when our health experts have told us that that is not what's most important. And it gives me a sense of worry that it's, what has happened so far this year could continue to happen. And well, let's just wait one more week to see if the numbers come down and that sort of thing. So that, kind of that rhetoric gives me pause. But I think we have two good timelines to work through as a, as a group to find compromise.
Okay. All right. So board members, if you'll look on the screen, we have several options. The first being a February 15th start date. That would be a day and a half that week with pre-K through 2. I'm going to summarize here. And then vaccinations would be given later that week, giving our teachers that opportunity to get those. And then the next week, the 22nd, would add into pre-K through 2. Just be sure we all are clear on that for the Monday and Tuesday because vaccinations will be given on Thursday and Friday. Am I correct so far? Right. Okay. So then, the first one, March 1st would be grade 6 and 9, and March 8th remaining secondary. And then the other suggestion is February 22nd for pre-K to 2, and everything is just bumped out a week. The 1st, the 8th, then the 15th. So that's what we have before us. Dr. Cashwell?
Madam Chair, can I get a point of clarification?
Absolutely.
Based on the suggestions that are coming forward? I've heard, it sounds like each board member state that with the return dates, whether it be February 15th or 22nd or March 1st, any of those weeks, that these would be Monday and Tuesday only in person. And we would resume the virtual schedule for the remainder of the week, particularly to accommodate staff not only receiving the vaccine, but any potential side effects and staffing. I think it's important that we note that since it's not showing on the screen.
Just those two weeks.
And then the week of March 8th and 15th would be full, the four days of in-person with the Wellness Wednesday.
Correct. The schedule we adopted.
The schedule that's previously been adopted. There would be a variance during those weeks that we're still administering the second dose of the vaccine. Is that what I heard? Okay. I just wanted to ensure. Thank you.
Okay. We have two options before us. Does anyone now want to take a moment just to ponder that? And then if anyone has an alternative to suggest, we will entertain that. Ms. Atkins?
I do have a few questions, Dr. Cashwell. How is transportation impacted by the timelines we have before us?
Our transportation team is poised and ready. We've gotten, for those who have chosen in-person learning, we already have transportation intent. Routes are developed according to our mitigation strategies. So again, I know one of the considerations we've brought forth before is simply that this staggered approach allows us to make sure that we can learn from those schedules and come, you know, make any tweaks we need to. By going elementary, middle, and high, that allows us to fine-tune. But, but we're ready. Transportation's ready.
And how is meal service impacted as well?
We do have a plan in place to continue to serve meals to those who are learning virtually via pickup and drop-off system. And then, of course, the plan for in, in school. While the cafeterias aren't open, there's a plan for lunch delivery to classrooms and so forth. Our administrators are ready with those lunch service plans.
Thank you for that. I think, you know, it's important to note that, I'll say it again, the mitigation strategies within our building are strong. And preventative measures have been adhered to as best as possible. For me, the logistics are in question. And I think that, you know, when we're thinking about logistics, we have to think about all of Henrico. The one thing that is very clear and has been clear for a while that Black and Latino individuals are more susceptible to this. And that when we look at our different districts, our districts are different. And so while there are districts that may not be as populated by Black and Latino, Pastor Cooper mentioned it earlier, I think I'm going to mention it again to make sure we keep that at top of mind. The Fairfield District is one of the most impacted districts. The more that they are, individuals are exposed, Black and Latino, the more susceptible that we are. And that should also be in this discussion. And I think any health expert you talk to will share that with you, regardless of the vaccine. So I think we need to keep those things in mind as we think about our different districts, as we talk about compromise. But we also have to keep in mind that ethnicity in this conversation is also particularly important, along with equity. Because not every district has a hospital in their district that they can run to when they have an emergency or reaction from this vaccine. So with that said, I do want to share that I, I like Mrs. Consella's suggestion. I said from the beginning that I would lean closer to the March 5th date. And it's not only because of what reactions may come, because there may not even be any. As, as Mrs. Ogborne said, you may get your shots and be totally fine. Or you may not. And as I alluded to earlier, they are, there are individuals, students, that are doing well virtually, and there are students that are not. At top of mind for me is we made a decision to give families a choice. And for the families that want their children in the building, they should be in the building. The question is logistics and making sure that we are providing conducive environments and having staffing to be able to provide the service. That's the question. And so Mrs. Consella's option actually, I think, does a better job of doing that. And so leaning closer to March, if it was up to me, I would start with March 15th. Let me just say that out loud. I would start with March 15th. But I do... But I do agree that compromise is necessary. And so with that said, I would move forward with Mrs. Consella's recommendation. And so those are my comments as we continue this discussion.
If, if no one else has a comment, I actually have another scenario I'd like to put up there. So, sorry to muddy the waters down there, ladies, but let's put up another one. I'm taking these two and making a new one. So we would have February 22nd, pre-K through 2. You ready?
Yep.
March 1st, pre-K through 5, because we're going to add in the 3, 5, but also add in the return of 6 and 9. And that's, I think that week, I'm correct, is two days because of vaccinations? Okay, and then March 8th, secondary returns? And that would be four days for everyone? Which is a combination of these two. So if we could see that.
You said March 8th?
Right, March 8th would be the return of secondary, all four days. And that's a combination of these two. It squeezes our return not three weeks, but four weeks because it combines pre-K through 5, returning different buildings. There's no reason 6 and 9 couldn't come the same week in the middle schools. They don't mix. They're, when I look at this, I kept wondering, why is 6 and 9 taking a separate week? 6 and 9 could come in the same week that 3 and 5 does. And then the next week is returned to secondary for everyone. And then we're all back in the week of March 8th and that's four days. And that's after inoculations. It gives our teachers time and it kind of achieves both of what these are trying to achieve.
Are we still giving the sixth graders and the ninth graders that one day that the superintendent alluded to?
It actually does. The week of March 1st, the sixth and ninth graders would be in the, in the middle school and high school buildings. And then 10th, 11th and 12th will return March 8th.
Madam Chair?
Absolutely, Ms. Shea?
So, a question and a thought. A question for Dr. Cashwell. In terms of transportation and, you know, proverbially and maybe we're literally getting the wheels on the bus for transportation as, as we phase in, do you find that to be a feasible solution to have, to be adding both 3 through 5 and 6 and 9 in the same week?
I mean, certainly, we're prepared to make that happen. And we recognize that as we're, even though using, using a phased-in approach, we'll eventually be transporti, transporti, transporting, pre-K through 12 students every day at the same, you know, in, in our staggered run system. So we're prepared to do that. I think any opportunity for us to learn by adding each grade level in a phased manner allows us just to provide a smoother service to our families. So, but yes, we, we can make that work.
I just think of it as, not only are we expanding elementary, but we're also adding service to two other levels simultaneously.
I would say that there will be hiccups even when we're just focusing on individual grade levels based on the, the way transportation is configured so that we can follow our, our health and safety plans, which means smaller numbers of students on the buses. It means more runs, but we are prepared to do that and we've certainly got those mapped out. So again, you know, the reason that a staggered approach was suggested is to, to get a handle on each, each level at a time as to not perhaps negatively impact the school level that would fall out of transportation runtime after, for example, elementary, then the middle, et cetera.
Mr. Pritchard, did you have information for us?
Yes, yes, madam chair. All, all the transportation, one big thing that we would ask is that there would no, there would not be a half-day on that situation or anything like that. I mean, it would be for a full day. I mean, we're going to have issues, kind of getting to think through, I guess.
Okay. Do you foresee the, okay, thank you.
Well, the 15th is the only half-day. The 15th is a half-day and we're prepared to handle that, yes. Okay.
All right, and then my other comment kind of addresses what I think is the elephant in the room for many of my constituents, which is, you know, if we wait until the 22nd, how do we know that the 22nd isn't then going to become the 1st, which is then going to become the 8th, et cetera? So I think whatever timeline we decide on needs to be firm.
As firm as it can be in an ever-changing, whoo, as we know. But yeah, I, I agree with you, I hear that. Anybody else have comments while we're waiting for this to come up?
I do. Because I'm pretty firm on the 15th for the remaining secondary. I mean, the, the feedback I've heard and, and to Reverend Cooper and to Ms. Atkins' comments, the Brooklyn District is more similar to the Fairfield and to the Verona than I am to the Tuckahoe and the Three Chopped. So efficacy with the vaccination for staff, I would appreciate that because students do transmit like adults, especially when students are hanging out with their friends outside in the community.
Okay, there we. Board members, if you'll look at the screen, we now have three options.
Yeah, if I can just suggest a clarification point. Any date, March, March 8th or later should have in-person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? Correct?
I would, I think we have to end Wellness Wednesdays.
The only reason I'm proposing a Monday, Tuesday date is the, is for the weeks that we're, we're vaccinating in order to help ameliorate some of the coverage that our teachers would have to, have to endure. And it would be very, very clunky inside our schools.
Okay, I've given you a minute to process. If you need a little more time, we can take a break if we need to. I need your feedback. Or if somebody has yet another one.
I would like to request, thank you. I would like to request a break.
I'm sorry?
I would like to request a break at this time.
A break?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a 10-minute break and, is that long enough? Okay, and we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay. Board members, I think we are ready to reconvene and we have had time to process, discuss and review all of the plans before us for a return date. So at this time, I will entertain any motions that board members might have.
Madam Chair, I'd like to
Before you make the motion, can we have the all three visible again? Because they're, I apologize for the interruption, Ms. Consella. It's just I couldn't see them all together.
So I think we need to go. But I think just for, I'm, I'm trying to think here.
I just want to see it.
We can't see all three. Board members, what I'm thinking
Thank you.
Is, I'm wondering whether it would be wise, since we have three plans before us, to vote on one, then two, then three? We can do that.
I would like to make a motion for Plan One.
I think that's, and then we winnow it down to whatever. That way we've addressed all three options. Does that work? Okay. So, Ms. Shea, did you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Plan One.
Is there a second? Being no second, it does for lack of second, correct? Right. Thank Ms. Watkins. That, so that would eliminate Plan One as it has no second. Thank you very much. So let's go to Plan Two. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to what? To vote on Plan Two?
Approve or, right, approve.
Plan Two?
Is there a second? Okay, there does for lack of motion. Is there a, a motion for Plan Three?
Madam Chair, I would like to, I would like to move that we adopt Plan Three.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. So we have a motion and a second. And now we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed, no.
So we have four members voting in the affirmative and one in the negative. Motion carries, we will go with Plan Three. Thank you. Any comments or discussion before we move on?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to make sure I've got the clarity needed around the plan that the board has just put forward and voted in related to the return, the expanded in-person return resuming that timeline. So we can see the timeline on the screen. You have approved a plan that brings back pre-K through second graders beginning on Monday, February 22nd. On Monday and Tuesday in-person. Wednesday is the Wellness Wednesday, asynchronous day as was previously advertised. And Thursday and Friday are virtual learning days, given those are vaccine administration days, should there be any side effects for staff to mitigate those circumstances. That next week, March 1st, bringing back the remainder of our elementary students as well as grade 6 through 9 on that same schedule I just mentioned because that is a vaccine administration week. And then that next week, bringing back the remainder of our secondary students, that would mean all of our students pre-K through 12 would attend. And that would be for the previously published schedule, which is Monday, Tuesday in-person, Thursday, Friday in-person, with Wednesdays being a virtual learning day. And I also heard the board clarify that staff should report one week prior to their in-person, when students would return in-person as it's staggered here. Did I understand that correctly?
Is that the consensus of the board that, so we're not going to have a hard and fast date that all teachers would come back in the building? It would be one week prior to?
It's a staggered return for students and a staggered return for staff. Again, these are staff who will be teaching in-person, those who will be working in-person in our buildings.
Do we have a consensus to that, okay? All right, and we, one of the other things that we do need to discuss is information on Wellness Wednesdays. So Dr. Cashwell, if you could give us some information on that, the status of that and the rationale, how that works, what it looks like. We'd appreciate it.
Happy to do that. Bring this a little closer, make sure everyone can hear me. So yes, to your question, Madam Chair, when we previously adopted the returning to expanded in-person timeline, that came with a schedule that we are keeping. And that is with a Wellness Wednesday. And there were a couple of reasons that plan was put into place. One, for deep cleaning in our buildings. And two, because we have a number of staff who will be teaching both virtual and in-person to allow them an opportunity for increased planning, professional development, as well as to focus on wellness. You know, this is something we have continued to hear. And this week especially, along about Monday, there was a lot of conversation about wellness and opportunities for breaks from screen time and those sorts of things. And that, that remains important and that feedback hasn't changed since the fall when we began in this unusually challenging environment. Both, it's challenging on our, our staff and on our students and their families. And so the idea would be that there'd be an express focus on wellness through reducing the amount of screen time, both for our students and our adults. And so, for example, the pre-K Wellness, pre-K through 5 Wellness Wednesday schedule comes with two hours of synchronous instruction in the morning. So there is still synchronous instruction for two hours. The remainder of the day are independent learning activities and enrichment activities or asynchronous time that focuses around things that are built to, again, enrich the school experience, expand, for example, science and social studies content. We might see the STEAM concepts used there. And again, those morning activities would be synchronous from 8 to 10, where for our secondary students, they would begin the day with their advisory period. And there would be some activities centered around mental health and well-being. And the remainder of the day would be focused on independent learning assignments for each of their core academic courses as well as their elective. So it's still a school day, there is still learning, there are expectations there. But it changes the format a bit to allow, again, some flexibility for students in relation to screen time. Again, an express focus on mental health and wellness topics that we're covering in advisory. And again, also allowing for some enrichment at the elementary level and then for staff to participate in professional development. And again, really, we want to make sure as we're expanding to in-person learning, we are still valuing the virtual learning experience that our students have chosen. A number of families have chosen that. Same with the in-person experience and honor the fact that our staff need the time to balance doing both of those well. And so, you know, that is the rationale behind Wellness Wednesday. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Board members, any questions on this topic?
I have a comment.
Did you, Ms. Atkins? Okay, I'm both sorry, this side this time and next time that. All right, Ms. Consella?
Yes, I'd just like to, once again, try to advocate for the staff and ask that you protect that Wellness Wednesday time. I realize it's professional development, but with us returning to buildings and potentially having staff in issues where teachers will have to cover classes and lose planning time, Wednesday will be valuable for our teachers and staff to plan. And then secondly, I'm glad we're keeping Wellness Wednesday, although a loss of instructional time. If, if I saw anything in the two to three weeks preceding the quarter close, it was that students, no matter where you are, that you had late assignments, perhaps you had fallen behind. And it's just a day where, where students perhaps could catch up. I mean, I know we're encouraging less screen time, but I'm very thankful that our students will have that time to catch up should they, should they need it. Because I know I received quite a bit of advocacy toward the end of the close, quarter close. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Shea, any comments on Wellness Wednesday? Reverend Cooper? Ms. Atkins?
Thank you for sharing that overview for Wellness Wednesdays. Something that, that I had been curious about is how are we going to measure the success of our Wellness Wednesdays?
Probably in a number of ways, but there are, you know, some required assignments. So at the secondary level for that period of time that is the advisory, they'll be participating, actually, the curriculum is called Second Step and there are lessons and assignments that go with that. So, you know, there will be an opportunity for the staff member who's leading that advisory period to be able to give students feedback directly on the work they've submitted and that sort of thing. And certainly will be wanting to make sure that we hear from our students as well about how, how effective that time spent for them is.
I think that, that we certainly should do some research. I would even ask to put a committee together to think about how we measure success and how we measure mental well-being. Sometimes getting the parents and community involved also will help with measuring success. And so that's just an idea that I wanted to share because sometimes there are ideas and recommendations outside of our bubble of the school system that certainly could help us make sure that the measurements that are in place accurately shows us what actual success looks like and then what busy work looks like when it comes to mental well-being. And so there's a difference between doing mindfulness that's effective over time and just doing busy work that does, that's not cumulative to help over a long period of time. So I would ask us to please explore our measurements as we look at Wellness Wednesdays.
Absolutely. And I would add that our curriculum specialists and those who work in our Department of Teaching, Learning and Innovation helped develop this framework in collaboration with the directors who are in school leadership and then also in conjunction with school staff. And we'll continue to bring the board up to date on how this is going and any measures that we have in place. Thank you.
And how, and also how will we communicate our success with families on Wellness Wednesdays? Because I think that Wellness Wednesdays, particularly for students, goes beyond the student. And so it would be helpful to share, you know, what we're doing on Wellness Wednesdays beyond the student. And also maybe even beyond just the staff so that the community knows really what, what it means and how it can work and be helpful in the process.
Happy to do that and look forward to providing the board regular updates. And just would reiterate that while that focus on wellness is just would reiterate that while that focus on wellness is expressed both at the elementary and secondary level, there are academic requirements in that day, though they may be independent, that this is not a non-instructional day, but it does mean that while typically in the virtual setting, we've been having synchronous live instruction throughout the day, this is a break from that type of a structure that has independent assignments built into each course as well as an opening focus each day that is around the idea of wellness.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And Dr. Cashwell, we have received a number of requests that you address the spring break, and we also have requests that we have a discussion about transportation and our, you know, just how we're going to plan now that we have a date, some questions about transportation. So, we'll take one topic at a time. If you could address spring break, please.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. We are not recommending any adjustment to the current school year calendar and/or the spring break dates as they stand. We certainly take seriously the fact that we know students need as much instructional time to be provided remediation and those sorts of things, but have not altered that calendar in order to do that. We'll continue to do that through our in-person, limited in-person, and virtual instruction as we've been doing. Some questions have come up related to travel, and if students or if their families and/or staff members are traveling over spring break, is there any impact to our health, safety, and mitigation plan? And so, I'll have Dr. Tiggen address that. I know this is something that's come up with the committee, and in the past, we've seen buffer weeks used. That has not been a recommendation that's come forward at this time. That spring break dates stay intact as they are. We not use a buffer week. We adhere to this calendar, which has us proceeding with pre-K 12 instruction even the week after spring break in-person for those who have chosen it, but would advise that the CDC guidelines be followed in relation to travel. If you could reiterate those?
Absolutely, and I'd first like to start with reiterating the mitigation factors we have in our schools being, you know, first and foremost, but then also as families or staff look at travel, if they're going to choose to do that. The Virginia Department of Health really says that they should check travel restrictions in the U.S. or in international travel before they go. They also recommend that people get their flu shot if they haven't already 14 days before they leave, and that people should get a test one to three days before they travel, and they're talking about a viral test, or three to days, and also another test three to five days after travel. They also suggest seven full days after travel that you get tested again, or spend 10 days or 10 full days if you don't get tested after travel. So, either a seven-day quarantine if you are tested, or 10-day if you have not. And obviously, the mitigation factors affect, are in effect as well, as far as wearing a mask every time you're in public, whether you're here or somewhere else, maintaining that six-foot social distancing, washing your hands and sanitizing. And I will say that the testing requirements in the seven and 10 days, depending on whether you test or not, of isolation when you return, is also recommended by the CDC. And again, those are the two groups that we have relied on for, you know, our direction as we've gone through this pandemic.
Board members, any questions about the information Dr. Tiggen just shared?
So, I.
Ms. Shea?
I could ask you some questions again. So, looking at clarity, if our families decide to travel for spring break, they would be expected to log in virtually for at least a week afterwards?
Yes, seven days if they test and 10 days if they don't, that they would be.
So, we're not limiting what.
Being virtual learners and then re-entry into the school when they've finished that isolation period.
So, we're not limiting what our families are able to do over spring break, but they need to understand that it then impacts how they can access, access learning upon their return.
Right, and they can still access learning, it's just the mode of accessing it and, you know, being upright and with what the expectations are as far as following these VDH and CDC guidelines.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kinsella?
Yes, I would just ask for the superintendent to please share this information with the public as soon as possible in terms of what we're asking them to do and what it looks like when they come back from travel.
Sure, and I certainly want to be clear that we are not infringing upon any individual family choices related to travel, you know, nor is, are we making any sort of ask there, but we are asking that the guidelines that are out there and widely accepted for travel as well as daily community interaction are followed because that does impact our ability to continue to keep in-person schooling open and make it safe for our students and our staff. So, you know, same thing with the daily screening, you know, this is an important thing. We are asking that our staff members as well as our students, you know, daily get in the habit of asking themselves those screening questions, and if you can't pass the self-screen or you shouldn't be coming in, and the same goes in relation to if you've not met those requirements related to travel for being able to go back in to the community as the guidelines state that you adhere to those, and we're prepared to accommodate you virtually if you're an in-person learner, if you do need to quarantine. So, we ask that our students, you know, if that's the case, and a family needs to leverage that, that they let us know. Safety first.
Any other questions? Okay, and thank you, Dr. Tiggen. And Dr. Cashwell, we can have a little bit of a discussion on transportation related to the return to school. I know Ms. Atkins had a couple of questions. Ms. Atkins, do you want to ask your questions, and then we'll get that rolling?
I do. I'd like to just have an overview of the bus schedule now. Not specifics, but a better understanding in, for specific schools, I can use Mayfair and Verona as an example, where the buses loop back two and three times for students. And now that we have a schedule moving forward, could you just share an understanding of the potential of how transportation may look for families?
Yeah, I'm happy to share that, and Mr. Pritchard can come forward also while I'm speaking in case I miss something, but would just share that, again, we have gathered intent from those who plan to be learning in-person and returning in-person as to whether they want to leverage transportation. So, routes have been developed accordingly for each school and area. And so, you know, because of the limited capacity on the buses so that we can allow for proper social distancing, seating assignments, all of those things, in some cases, there may be more runs than would typically be expected to a certain community in order, but it just is going to depend. But our transportation team has done a masterful job putting that puzzle together, and they will be communicating not only with the schools and then the schools with the families on which bus you've been assigned, what your route time is, and what you can expect. And so, you know, while we understand, like with any first go with transportation, the first weeks of school, traditionally in the fall, we ask that our families be patient, but I think we've got a good system in place to be able to, even though there might be more runs than traditional, have arranged our bus and transportation. In some cases, it may be two buses are coming into the neighborhood at the same time, but those assignments have been arranged to get kids to school swiftly and efficiently, and just would ask for patience as we adjust to that new schedule.
And this is a premature question, so I don't expect a response at this moment. However, I would expect that, you know, communication would go out to families because this is different. And so, when a child is at the bus stop and two buses come, it's going to be critical that our families know what to do, when to do, and how to do. And, you know, given the timeline that we have, that information needs to go out as quickly as possible so that families can plan for their child to be at the bus stop and the times they need to be at the bus stop.
Absolutely. Point well taken, and I know our bus drivers are so excited and ready to greet and meet their students for the first time and get them acclimated to the new way of riding the bus and to get familiar with their routes and which students will go on which bus and that kind of thing, and make contact with families, especially our youngest ones, pre-K through two. So, we will definitely work to keep those lines of communication open for our families so they know what to expect and get our students acclimated.
I'm sorry I made you come all the way to the podium.
I tried to save him the trip, but he came.
No, no, that's okay.
And I will just, thanks again to Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Ellis, our Director of Transportation, and the entire transportation team. They, as I said, it's quite a complex puzzle that's been put together here, but they're ready to execute the plan.
Thank you so much.
It's an amazing team.
Reverend Cooper, nothing? Okay, Ms. Shea. Ms. Kinsella, you had another?
Yeah, I had one more question about if a staff member, I know we talked about families in spring break, but if a staff member should travel over spring break, will their class be virtual for seven to 10 days?
I think individual staff members would need to communicate their individual situation to administrators, and if, I mean, I guess travel could be, is used loosely, and it could mean, you know, down the street or so on and so forth. So, I think understanding per the guidelines for travel and per the guidelines for symptoms, if any of those would be true, then we would work to determine how that situation might be handled in a building, and same if an individual staff member were to become symptomatic or not pass the screener for whatever reason on a daily basis, as we've shared with our family, that, families, that could disrupt in-person instruction. It could mean there's a change there. We've certainly worked to leverage substitutes and other staffing arrangements, but there is, it is possible that could have an impact on in-person instruction.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions, conversation? Is that enough for today? I think so. Okay, so, that finishes our agenda for today, and if you will look at our agenda, our next meeting, we are going to be together again very soon, and that is next Thursday, February the 11th, our work session at 1:00 p.m. We do have a 5:30 scheduled public hearing on the budget, so, and that is online for anyone who would like to study that and come ask us questions about the budget. Hearing no further business, we are adjourned.